Okay. All right, it's seven o'clock, excuse me, it's six o'clock, didn't mean to speed you up there. It's at six o'clock, so I want to call this meeting of the Edgefield County Council to order on August the eighth, two thousand and twenty-third, thank all of you for being here tonight. We're going to start with the invocation followed by the pledge, so if everyone will please stand, and I'll lead us in the invocation. Please bow. Heavenly Father, we come to you now to say thank you. Lord, we come to you with a heart full of thanksgiving for all the things you do for us, and Lord, we're just blessed by everything you do for us, and, Lord, we thank you so much for bringing us together as a county to talk about business and, and different ways to make this county continue to move forward. And in that, Lord, we ask you to give us wisdom so that we can do the things we need to do to help our county. Lord, we ask you to please bless us all, in your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. All right, so council, what we need to do tonight, if it's okay, is we need to adjust the agenda a little bit. We have two resolutions, so you're used to me asking you if we can move the new business item one and new business item two to just above special recognition. So we'd have two resolutions and then special recognition on the agenda. If there are any objections to that? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as I have so presented it?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, Mr. Talbot makes the motion and Dr. Kenyon seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes, this is the July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, our regular monthly meeting. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is our public comment period, so I'll ask the clerk, did anyone sign up for our first public comment period? All right, I will remind those who signed up, you have a maximum of five minutes, and there's a total time of thirty minutes for this part of the agenda, but there's only one speaker. And let's see, it is Tracy Freeman, so Mr. Freeman, you want to wait and hold your comments till we get to that part of the agenda? Okay, thank you. So council, then we have no comments from the, in the first public comment period, so I will close that portion of the meeting and move to reports. Any questions or comments from council on the reports? Hearing none? Next will be our two resolutions. So our first resolution is technically number one under new business, if you're following along, is consideration of approval of resolution twenty-one, twenty-three, eleven sixty-five, recognizing Edgefield County resident John Hudson for his donation of drainage materials for soccer field drainage, for the soccer field drainage project. And I should tell you, I'm going to read both resolutions, and then council will go down and have our photos made with those that we're recognizing tonight. So for everyone here, let me read the resolution for Mr. Hudson. So whereas Edgefield County wishes to recognize those persons who have provided distinguished service to Edgefield County, and whereas John Hudson, a citizen of Edgefield County, seeks to better his community, and whereas John learned of the joint project between the town of Edgefield and Edgefield County to address longstanding soccer field drainage issues, and whereas John has had past experience in resolving issues of this nature, and whereas John expressed a desire to donate a vast supply of drainage materials from his years in that business, which resulted in a successful project and a large cost savings to the citizens of Edgefield, and now therefore be it resolved by the Edgefield County Council in session duly assembled on this eighth day of August, two thousand and twenty-three, that John Hudson be honored for his incredible generosity and service to the citizens of Edgefield County. With that, council, is there a motion to approve that resolution as I have presented it?
So moved.
So Ms. Ireland makes the motion and Dr. Kenyon seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Hudson. Stay right there. We'll be down in just a minute. Next is the second item of new business, which is consideration of approval of resolution twenty-one, twenty-three, eleven sixty-six, recognizing Edgefield County resident Janice Cleveland for her charitable endeavors through her charity, Loaves of Love. So if I can, let me please read that resolution to everyone here. Whereas Edgefield County Council wishes to recognize those persons who have provided distinguished service to Edgefield County, whereas Janice Cleveland, a citizen of Edgefield County, has sought to better her community through charitable fundraising for these past eight years, and whereas Janice, with the help of her family, uses her love of baking bread to generate donations to be given directly to families in need, and whereas Janice has baked and distributed thousands of loaves of bread to put her faith in action for those needing assistance, and whereas for the third year, Loaves of Love Family Ministry is also raising funds for Christmas gifts for the elderly, having served a hundred and ten last year. Now therefore be it resolved by the Edgefield County Council in session duly assembled this eighth day of August, two thousand and twenty-three, that Janice Cleveland be honored for her incredible generosity and service to the citizens of Edgefield County. Is there a motion to approve this resolution as I have presented it?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Moody makes the motion and Mr. Talbot seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Janice. Now before going any further, council, let's go down, I'd like to see, we can go ahead and get our picture made with our two winners, so I'll ask Mr. Hudson if he'll come up first.
Two winners.
Winners, winners, your winners here.
We had a jackpot.
Counsel, before you go back up, if we stay down here a minute.
Okay.
You were just getting fast. So while we're all down here, well, most of us anyway, we're going to go ahead and do our two quarterly award winners, and so Mr. Cadell is going to read that information, so I thought we'd just stay here, so, because no voting on necessary here, so turn it over to David.
Our third quarter employee of the quarter is Marie Goodman of the Edgefield County Office of the Magistrate. The recommendation letter for Marie reads, "The magistrate's office nominates Marie Goodman for employee of the quarter for Edgefield County. Ms. Goodman has been employed with the magistrate's office for thirty-one years. During this time, she has and continues to provide quality service to each and every citizen who inquires about a complaint and motions for restraining orders, procedures for filing a summons, and complaint, claim, and delivery actions, landlord-tenant issues, and public sales. If you have a civil question, she has the knowledge and experience to answer your question and to guide you in the right direction. Her exceptional, helpful, and friendly attitude when dealing with the general public and employees makes everyone feel at ease, and makes a tremendous difference in people's lives as they navigate the court process. Mrs. Goodman is reliable and dependable, she promotes workplace harmony and mutual understanding and trust. She contributes to the overall performance of this office, significantly improves the work process, and increases the efficiency within the office, and continues to perform above and beyond normal job requirements. Mrs. Goodman is exceptional. She exhibits all the positive professional attributes that not only make this office successful, but make Edgefield County successful. We are most fortunate to have such a dedicated and quality employee who cares not only about her job, but the people of Edgefield County." And our fourth quarter employee of the quarter is Carl Culpepper from EMS. The recommendation letter writes, "The EMS department would like to nominate supervisor Carl Culpepper for the quarterly recognition. This year Carl was promoted to shift supervisor and has been an excellent leader to his team. Being new to his role, Carl has dedicated his time to developing his leadership skills and bringing his team together to better serve the citizens. Each quarter, the EMS department awards the team shift with the most daily ambulance check-offs completed. At the end of the second quarter, Carl and his team were in first place and received the award. This year, the EMS department completely overhaul the patient care protocols. Carl led the charge in organizing the meetings, reviewing the changes, and ensuring every last detail was complete. This was a task that he chose to take on himself. His dedication to improving our patient care and rewriting over a hundred protocols was a huge accomplishment. This was the first time in the department's history the protocols were revised by the providers themselves. In just a short time, Carl has really proven himself to be a leader within the EMS department. I hope that you consider Carl for this award."
Congratulations. I'll ask Carl and Marie, if you'd join us up here for... Appreciate everybody's indulgence and patience as we do that, but these recognitions are important, and we want to give both employees and, of course, citizens their due, so appreciate that. Normally, we do not go into executive session until the end of a meeting, but we do have an item later on that we need to discuss now so we can take it up later on. So I'm going to ask, is there an executive, a motion for executive session for a legal briefing on a potential lawsuit and discuss a fee in lieu for, of ad lorm taxes? So is there a motion to go into executive session for those two items?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbot makes the motion, is there a second?
So moved. I'll make a second, I'll do it.
Ms. Ireland, apparently second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. We'll be back momentarily, I hope.
Just don't know the word. We don't need. Humans.
Why is it always so?
Tranquility. That's the. It's really. So. I didn't see that. He wants to sit.
Well, sometimes I'm leaving. It's the most.
One, one day we should have a slow. Coords. That's an open. Turkey. Right. So we're all just like hearing some. Okay. Yeah. Interesting. Yeah. This is. That will take. No, not. I mean, that's. We're still trying to.
Yeah. We just want to fix it. Because it happens like.
Two. I'm going to do that.
I was just telling.
We both said. Yes. That's. They pulled them out. The only way to get this. They were. That's what he said. Now, for searching the whole. Yes. Everybody. It's almost. I'm here. We. Just. So. Hey, you have. I'm just saying. Take a certain. That's good or cute. I got back here. You enjoy. Good. You have. I didn't miss. But it has.
She's down. She can't. She's one of.
A lot of.
She's.
I think. Did you say? Was. I have. Cold. It's getting out. It's a great. That's. I was going to. Very. It is long. So they were already. So he says they have a chair. Once we get home, I have to. Does it ever? Some. Yeah. We don't need that rest. As for. It's not. Scandal. There's nothing. We got. Yeah. It's. Yeah. Tomorrow. Is kind of. Free. And yeah. They. Big. Seventeen. Let's show. Everything. Can't. But. For. I say. Oh, very. Somebody. So can. If I just. Don't build something. So that. Commerce. Sheriff. Not a make. Small.
Some more.
Yeah.
Oh. We ready? Okay. All right, it looks like we got everybody back in place, so the county council is back in public session. No action was taken in executive session. And with this council, we move to page two of the agenda because we've done items one and two already under new business. So we'll go to new business number three, which is consideration of approval to add a fifty dollar cleaning fee for all Sweetwater Community Center rentals. So I'll ask the administrator if he would like to give us an explanation on this one, please.
Yes, thank you. So we currently pay a cleaning service to clean the Sweetwater Community Center after weekend rentals. So after a Friday rental, it may be cleaned on Saturday after Saturday rental on Sunday. If the rentals on Sunday, existing staff, county staff, will generally go clean it. So we would like to add the cost, just the actual cost of the cleaning fee to the rental contract, the rental fee schedule. So that, that county staff would no longer have to make a trip across the county to do that. And the existing cleaning fees we pay would be covered by the renters themselves. We're not looking to make anything on it. We just want to pass the actual fee that we charge on to the customer. That's all.
Questions or comments from council? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the fifty dollar cleaning fee as the administrator has just explained?
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Talbert seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is item number four under new business, consideration of approval of terminating the existing lease and entering into a new lease for Bettis Park with the Mount Canaan Association. So of course, I'll ask our administrator to walk us through these details, please.
Thank you. As council is aware, the county recently received an apportionment from the state of eight hundred thousand dollars. That's actual money, that's not a grant, that's nothing we have to match. That money is for improvements for Bettis Park. Our lease was set to expire in April twenty twenty five, and it's necessary that we extend that lease with the Mount Canaan Association, the owner of Bettis Park, prior to expending these public funds. This new lease agreement is for eight years. I realize in the narrative in the agenda, it says seven, but we, we recognize that we need it for seven years after we expend the money. So this would give us time for construction. The lease has an optional five-year extension, and it lists several intended expenditures which are different and in addition to the previous lease. These include ball field renovations, a shelter, an additional shelter, new fencing, bleachers, new playground equipment, including adaptable equipment. The new lease also adds one baseball field that was not previously included in the lease. This is the ball field behind the Bettis Prep School. So we will add that parcel to the lease. And staff recommends that council approve this lease because we think that would make a tremendous benefit to the county. Thank you.
So just for clarity for people listening, you know, or later now on our system, the eight hundred thousand dollars again is from the state budget. That is not a county appropriation.
That is correct. Our local legislative delegation, a member secured that money in the state annual budget, and it requires no match on our part. Our responsibility is simply to get the bids and oversee the work.
Questions or comments from council? Okay. If everybody's good, is there a motion to approve the new lease agreement as the administrator has presented it?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Dirk. All right, so Dr. Kenyon makes the motion and Mr. Talbert seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next council on the agenda is number five, new business, and that is consideration of approval of the first reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-three, seven ninety-nine to modify sections three, four, five, eight, nine, fifteen, and eighteen of the fire services contract. And I'll ask our administrator first for some of the details, and I think Tracy's here to talk to us, too.
That's correct, we do have a speaker on this issue, but I'd like to go through some of the details of, of the changes of this contract. So the fire board has been trying to make changes for quite a while. They've been stymied by the requirement for a unanimous vote on the fire board. So staff have rewritten the fire contract to replace that unanimous vote requirement with a five-two majority to approve changes to the contract. Any changes would have to be then approved by county council. We have removed the reference to a specific millage because millage is set annually by council. We have made board terms consistent with another ordinance that we have that refers to fire board terms, so they're completely consistent. Finally, we have made changes to the disposition of vehicle tax funds from the Meriwether Fire Department District. Currently, all of the fire portion of vehicle tax money from Meriwether goes to bring any underfunded fire department, any of the other six, to the minimum funding level. And then all remaining funds from Meriwether's vehicle taxes are split six ways. The only underfunded department now is Northside Fire Department. This year, they were underfunded approximately nineteen thousand dollars. And what I mean by underfunded is the contract sets a minimum funding level of forty-five thousand dollars from rooftop taxes. And that is the only fire department that does not rise to that level. We project they will be underfunded about fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars next year. So staff proposes to change the fire contract to restore the remaining six-way split after Northside is made whole to Meriwether. This amount is approximately thirty-five thousand dollars that would be restored to Meriwether Fire Department for their use. That particular item has now been endorsed by all of the fire departments that do currently receive the six-way split. So they are in concurrence on that. That's all. I think Tracy Freeman is here to speak on the issue.
All right, and I'll call on Tracy, he's the, come on up, he's the chairman of the fire board, so I'll turn it over to him for anything we need to hear tonight.
I'd like to say good evening, first of all. First and foremost, as firefighter here in Etchwood County, you got to remember, we are here to do two things, save lives first and then property second. We don't care if it burned down, as long as we get that person out of the, out of the house. And, but second of all, I just want to say first, thank you, Mr. David, because we have been fighting this, this battle on trying to get this contract changed for about a year and a half. And with, also with the guidance of Mr. Moody. The situation is, you all know that, well, actually, I buy a lot of diesel every week also, my business that I own. Diesel had went up from three twenty-eight a gallon approximately a month ago to up to three, four dollars and twenty-four cents a gallon in the past thirty days. And those fire trucks don't run on, they don't run on fumes anymore. And so, Meriwether does a lot of calls, they do a lot of calls for EMS, they do a lot of other calls, also help us out. I represent the count line, board, I'm count line board also, I'm the chairman of the, the county fire board. But, you know, that's when Meriwether start raising their heads and hey, look here, you know, our fuel cost is rising dearly on this situation. And so that's why we was, okay, let's revamp this contract, and we've been working diligently. Sometime, we're supposed to meet quarterly, well, we was meeting monthly. And so then we started digging down into the contract, and I think the last time I could copyright anything on the contract was two thousand and seven. And then, as you said, it was stagnant. Majority, I mean, majority rule or unanimous, we was not getting anywhere. And so I definitely love you taking consideration and revising this thing. And keep in mind, too, the same price that you paid for a, for your, I just said, two thousand Chevrolet pickup truck, you try to buy that same pickup truck today, and it's about almost double. And we purchased a brand-new fire truck, I think in two thousand and four, it was a hundred and forty-eight thousand, a hundred and fifty-two thousand. That same truck now is right at about twice, if not three times that much. So, of course, we know we got steadily rooftops moving in, but that's one thing, well, two things that people look at, and, you know, it's public safety. And we kind of follow up under that jurisdiction, so definitely love for you to take the consideration. And want to say again, thank you, Mr. David, for his guidance on how we can do this, and also Mr. Moody on, for that, for us, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so if nothing else from the administrator on this.
That's all.
I'll ask council for comments or questions.
A few things, Mr. Chairman.
Right ahead.
This has been, like Tracy's mentioned, this has been a thirteen-month project of mine, and it started with Roger, and then when David got hired, he put it at the top of his list, under a little bit of hot and by me, but I appreciate it. And then Doc's been on board, been very instrumental in getting this contract together, also the numbers that he's provided for us as far as rooftops and everything. Once again, I want to thank Tracy and the other seven fire departments for hanging in there, sticking with us and riding it out to the end, but it's ended a sixteen-year injustice for Meriwether. So we won't get all the money back, but I can promise the taxpayers or whether where, I'm not stopping until we do, but I show, our support is one hundred percent.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Any other questions or comments from council?
How in the world, they thought they were getting seven people to agree on anything? I'm, and this is a lot of things to agree on, so I'm just saying, it makes, it's a no-brainer that that be righted, so.
I can't speak for the past, but I believe that was intentional.
It was.
Well, and I will say too, toward what Mr. Moody was saying too, is that while this contract is probably not perfect, it's a lot better. And, you know, we can improve on it later, but this is much better. So, I appreciate everybody not letting perfect get in the way of good. So that's, that's good. Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance?
Oh, moved.
Twenty-one, twenty-three, seven ninety-nine. I think Mr. Moody made the motion. Is there a second? Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next council is number six under new business, consideration of approval of resolution twenty-one, twenty-three, eleven sixty-seven, committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes between Etchfield County and Project Fastball, identifying the project and other matters related there, too. I'll ask the administrator, because six and seven kind of go together, if you want to just take them both together and talk about them, then we'll vote separately, of course.
Thank you, I will speak to six and seven. This resolution authorizes the county to negotiate a fee in lieu of taxes agreement with Project Fastball. And the following item on new business number seven is simply the first reading of the ordinance by title only for this fee in lieu of taxes agreement. There will be further details provided at September's meeting on the nature of the project. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Okay. Hearing none, then on item six, I'll ask, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty-one, twenty-three, eleven sixty-seven?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbert makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ireland seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously, which will take us to number seven, which is the consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-three, seven eighty, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Etchfield County, South Carolina, and Project Fastball to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other matters related, other related matters. So we've already heard the explanation from the administrator, any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance twenty-one, twenty-three, seven eighty?
Same.
Ms. Ireland makes the motion, is there a second? Dr. Kenyon seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next council, we move to the second public comment period, so I'll ask the clerk, did anyone sign up for the second? Okay. There are no, nobody signed up, council, so I'll close the public comment period and move to reports from county council members. Are there any county council members with any reports tonight? I just want, go ahead, I'm sorry, Jackie. Go ahead.
Okay, I just want you all to, to know that last weekend, we had several of us councils, attended South Carolina Association of. um, attended South Carolina Association of County, which was very informative and knowledgeable. Um, I attended three classes there, uh, very, very much education, um, legal issues and county government. I really enjoyed it. I think I can be a lawyer now. You're doing a great job. Then, uh, wish David and I, shared the same class. We learned a lot, very much. Then, uh, just, uh, and we talked about the building effect, the government relations. We discussed, um, members as individual ethics and conflicts of interest. South Carolina code section, how, uh, certain audience must have public hearing. You know, just educate you, even though I've been on the board since two thousand and eighteen, you never can learn enough. And, and I tell you, I get so much out of these class. It is really a relaxation for me to just go in class and sit back instead of me teaching. Now I'm the student. And I, and I, David and I was sitting there, we didn't even get on our phone and play a game. Was really into it. I really, really enjoyed it. And I'm looking forward to going back next year. And I, I hope I can get a little more county, council member on board, but I understand, I do.
Thank you, Dr. Kenyon. I think you said...
I just want to give my monthly convenience center report. I got a phone call this morning, really wasn't a very pleasant one. We aren't doing anything. We aren't doing anything. Well, I believe next month, we're bringing an ordinance forward to deal with it, new signage. And we're trying to put an ordinance in place that will give our code enforcement officer a little bite when he goes down there and catches somebody. David has met with the workers at each one. They're in agreement. We're trying to stop the big bad stuff coming in. So we are moving forward. So hopefully, that caller is listening to this meeting or reads about it in the paper.
I have, I have, um, this, uh, some I would like to add. I'd like to say that I went along to the Association of County, um, about David and Jackie. And I was in, um, economic development class. Will did an excellent job. I was glad, I don't think he realized I was in that class till later on, but he did excellent job, and we definitely appreciate it. And some of the things he have already told us, told us down there, I knew some of this stuff because I had been in some of the other economic development classes. I am in some of the advanced class now, so, uh, I, just a tad here to jacket right now, just a tad here to, uh... But I definitely enjoyed, we enjoyed it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I, I, not to be left out, I must thank, so, no, I'm just kidding. We had a little storm, you know, come through our, the west side last night. We had some power outages, but I just want to thank the county, um, road workers especially, who worked hard. We had some issues out there, were some trees, a lot of trees, um, down and, and, um, across roads. And I know there's first responders and whatnot that came and from the volunteer fire departments that cleared roads. Just thank you to everybody who worked to, to make it safe again to travel. We had hail, we had some straight line winds and some, you know, it was over in ten minutes, but for ten minutes, it was pretty, pretty intense. So I want to thank them. And also, we have on Highway twenty-three, we are having a reclamation of the pavement. It's kind of rough out there. So for right now, if you can detour around, it's probably a good idea. We had some constituents here tonight sharing with us their woes of trying to travel the road. It's, it's a little bit of a mess. They're working extremely hard, um, to, to get the new pavement down. And as I understand it, then they will, um, just simply resurface from the fire department back to the bridge in Modoc. So, um, it's going to be a little bit of time, so just bear with us on twenty-three as we, we get that better, so.
Thank you. And thank you to council. With that, I will move to the report by the county administrator.
Thank you. Just want to let council know that all downtown county office buildings will be switching from AT&T to Vive. I've heard comments from some of you, um, when they talk to me on the phone, how it's crackly and it, and it sounds horrible. Most of our lines are old copper, and the sound quality is horrible, especially after a rain and even complete loss of use sometimes. The courthouse switched to Vive months ago. Staff have been very pleased with the change. All of our phones will be voice-over IP, um, much more modern. And, and we'll soon just have a better product at a lower cost. So we're very excited about that. The animal care and control facility ribbon cutting, at long last, will be August fourteenth at four-thirty P.M. The public is invited to that. We encourage people... But the public is invited to that. We look forward to seeing everyone. After the ribbon cutting at four-thirty, we will have a tour of the facility for the public. So you'll get to look at the inside operations. The law enforcement center is now thirty percent complete. There were some earlier weather delays, but they have overcome most of them, and they are back on schedule. The Boy Scout Hut, the council has voted to have remodeled, has been cleaned out by our county staff, and the contractor's been authorized to start work. We've also cleared brush from around the facility. It looks much better. And per council's instruction, we are currently soliciting bids for playground equipment and an outdoor shelter. We have begun obtaining bids for the renovations to Bettis Park. Just projecting our hopes that council might go ahead and, and approve the, the lease with Mount Canaan, and you have tonight. So we anticipate work beginning within two months of having that contract signed. We're going to try to move quickly on that, and I think the state expects us to with that apportionment. The last thing is, I would like to ask Assistant Administrator Hart Clark to give us an update on the emergency radio system.
Okay, so some time ago, y'all authorized us to redo our county emergency radio system, and it has been some time. So just give you, give you and the public a brief update on where, where we stand with that. So obviously, a good portion of the time that's passed was in design phases, acquiring equipment, and things of that nature. The last three months, um, no activity has been taking place, and we've had a few people ask us, you know, what's going on? What, what's the status on that? So I have been negotiating lease contracts on four towers throughout the county to put this, um, system on. And as of today, I have signed those leases, so they are headed back to the lease company. American Tower has to dispatch somebody from the FCC and a structural engineer to do an analysis of each site. Once those approvals are done, then Augusta Communications can continue the project, start mounting the hardware, and bringing the actual radio systems online. That process will likely still take quite a while. They will have to schedule each fire department, they will have to schedule the sheriff's department, each individual town police department, and they will have to, car by car, person by person, issue and program these radios the way they need to be. So there will still be a process. Just so y'all know, because I'm sure it's a question that you've been asked, all of the equipment has been ordered. It's all ordered. It is just not delivered, because it's a lot of equipment, and Augusta Communications doesn't want to store that equipment, you know, in their office. So it's been ordered, it's just not delivered. All they're waiting on is to get those lease agreements and that structural analysis, and then they can move forward. And like I said, I signed that, signed those leases today, so it should happen pretty quick. That's all.
Questions or comments from council? The one thing I will point out in, in their report for everybody is three things that I heard. One was, we talked about an animal shelter for a long time. A week from today, it opens officially. The council put in last year more than two million dollars for a new countywide communication system. We're on the cusp of getting that accomplished. And for a forty million dollar law enforcement center, we're back on track and thirty percent complete. So things are moving. So we, we appreciate that, because I know that takes a lot of hard work. All right, so if there's nothing else for the administrator, um, I'll close with my very brief comments. I, I like to periodically remind people that while they see county council members here once a month at these meetings, these meetings may represent ten percent of council's work. I, I appreciate the time and the effort that council is doing behind the scenes between meetings. You meet with constituents and staff and others to research, to gain knowledge, to help solve problems, to take training, as you heard tonight, to, all the work to make Etchfield County better. And I don't think it would surprise anyone that our staff does the same thing. They work not only with us, but a wide variety of employees and others to make our county perform well each day. So I just want to take a minute to, 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 for staff and to council to know that your diligence is appreciated, and I thank you for taking time to do more than is required in these roles. So it's very much appreciated, and then I think sometimes unnoticed by many. So thank you. Council, that's all I have. Since we have no other business to conduct, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Talbert seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming.